Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to Tuesday morning. Me. I'm gonna behave myself. Okay, then everybody had a chance to review the agenda. It's not too long, so yeah, we do, but does anybody have any conflicts or objections to their current agenda? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as written. Madam Auditor, would you please read us the minutes of the last meeting?
Sure. I'll go get one. November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Ty Rosberg, Chairman Presiding, Members President, Wer Schults, Dozart, Rosberg, Mulbauer, and Hyden. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the Board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. Discussion was made with the Board by Wendy Mueller via Zoom from West Central Community Action, presenting their year in review and a funding request of four thousand dollars. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three, West Central Community Action provided one million twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars worth of services to Crawford County residents. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the liquor license for the new country pumpkin. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Hyden, to approve waiving thirty-three-dollar interest tax exemption for parcel one-three-one-one-four-one-four-zero-one-four. Church Ministerio La Voz de Garcia. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozart, to approve the Certificate of Cost Allocation Plan. Motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, Board adjourned at eleven, or ten fifty-three AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Does anybody have any additions or corrections to this? Any objection? Hearing none, that'll stand as.
Can I write the minutes in pencil?
All right. Okay, let's move on to our supervisors' reports. I don't remember who I punished last start. Jean's got a hell of a pile over there. Do you get quite a bit this morning, ma'am?
Well, it's all a conversation that we can have about our meeting that we had. The legislation meeting that we had, that's what most of it is. So, do we want to start talking about that?
New District, read thing.
Sound good to me. New Secretary.
Oh, thank you very much.
There you go. Our new secretary of the district.
I thought I said I wouldn't be very good at that.
Do you remember Linus, the older gentleman supervisor for up north? He's pretty outspoken. He looks at Jean and goes, "You look like you'd make a great." Yeah, you're right, a great secretary.
And I think I said.
And she like, "Oh."
I don't think I'd really be that good at that.
You're in the headlight.
And then there was a motion in.
Where you had a chance to say no, you were at.
I think it'll be just fine.
Yeah, you'll do good.
I know she will.
I don't think I'll have any problem. But I think one of the things, the takeaways that I had from it is the Medicaid funding with the jails that, you know, they have a priority to make sure that Medicaid gives more. ISAC supports the state funding and increase and reimbursement rate for the Medicare over covered services that are bare minimum, covers the rate of inflation. And so that is an issue. You know, you have the people that are in the jail and they have these expensive medications and you're required to get them for them. And they take away their Medicaid while they're in prison, which that just doesn't make any sense.
Everyone wants to give it back to the state, then they get it back.
Yeah, so.
Just at the county level.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And prior to. So if they're in state prison?
No, for our county jail.
Yes, but if they're in state.
If they're in state.
Medicaid, Medicare covers it. But if they're in county, remember that gal that came down from Judah District?
Yep.
She didn't have a good answer for why it's not covered at the county level. They're not even incarcerated yet.
And it's a problem for the sheriff's budget. It really is. It's a real problem for the sheriff's budget. So I'm glad to see that they're taking some notice on that. For you gentlemen that weren't there, it got a little heated with Jason.
I heard some.
Yeah, just a little bit. You know, there's going to be problems in the next budget year when we no longer getting the funds that are being taken away from us from the seniors, which Jason said he listened to his constituents. You know, senior citizens are leaving Iowa because they can't afford their taxes. And so they did something about it. And that's how they look at it. And the veterans, they want to support the veterans, and so they did something about it.
On our checkbook.
Yeah.
But he couldn't see that point.
Yeah.
He really couldn't, because there's a lot of. Don Cast pushed him about, or by different ones. Where do you want us to cut? With the maintainers? Right, as the maintainers, as the county employee, what do you want? Pretty bare bones, the way it is.
Don't have a heart attack over in Clay County. It'll take forty-five minutes for the ambulance to get there, those kind of comments, you know, that we just.
If you get out of this realm of area here, where the EMS is strong, you'll be waiting a long day.
And, you know, so, and Dave, you can talk about that when you get, because I'll take my time talking about a couple of other issues that we have. So the mayor, Dennison, had called that there's a homeless person living in a van shell down at Washington Park. And she wondered if I knew of any, you know, thing that they could, that they could put up. Just a nice fella, no mental illness, no, just, you know, it's here, he's from Puerto Rico. And so.
Well, he's a citizen either.
That is exactly why they, Lulac can't help because he's a citizen.
Are you kidding me?
That's the true story. So they have, so I'm involved now in a committee that we're going to have Clay Adams, the police chief, myself.
Okay, I got that for a second. Can Lulac help? Hispanics that are citizens? I mean, there's not, at all.
That was kind of the pushback that we've been having on this.
Because there's a number, there's a lot of them that could use help that are citizens.
Yeah, I think it's just to tangle the webs to get your citizenship. I think it's here or there. I think that's, you know, as we get more into it, that's what we're realizing. Some of us didn't know it. It's a great organization that does fabulous things here in Crawford County. But we have this one individual who is just in that crack of no place to go. Wants to get a job, wants to, you know, do the right thing. But so we've got the police chief involved in it, the mayor of Dennison, Clay Adams, Deidre, and then Lauren from the.
It's not specific to. We had, I don't know, two charter oak, or they're around anymore, live under the bridge all summer.
Yeah.
I don't know if they are or not.
I would see them, but.
Yeah, I don't know for sure. I mean. Yeah, I don't know.
Two living under the bridge all summer long.
Yeah, you'd see them wandering over to the bathroom and.
Well, and then they had a report that going out to Oak Brook that they're.
There's probably more than just one, is I guess is what I'm saying.
This guy was in one of the Dennison parks and so really, you know.
But I think, I guess my point is that while you're talking, maybe don't specifically just try to think of one person, maybe a little bit.
Is there a city ordinance that allows someone to live in a city park?
I don't think so. It became quite a conversation here. So we're going to have a meeting and try to put our resources and heads together, just kind of a little heads up that now it's really surfaced because we're.
You know, unlike our cities, we don't typically have that. So we don't have shelter of any type.
No, you know.
No, I don't think.
You'd have to go to Sioux City or.
You can get, yeah, you know, I thought of that place that we financed. But then that also is a kind of a halfway place for, you know, like a stepping stone where you're trying to. So that was.
People need a job, but they don't have the transportation to get their job. So they can't get a job. So it's just a snowball, just keep going.
No place to clean up, so presentable for an interview is one of the problems that, you know, we were having in, when I was back on mental health, but that place.
I bet Clay will come up with a heck of a plan.
Yep, yep, so that's why we got Clay involved. Actually, I was with, in the car with Dave when that call came from the mayor and he said, "Well," you know. So it's going to take a village maybe to figure it out, but we're kind of working on it. In that same vein, this week, I had someone call me. They have a child who's struggling with the, I call it an adult, I guess, but long story short, found him unresponsive, called the ambulance, the ambulance took him to the hospital. Hospital took him to Omaha. Omaha suggested he get in a rehab place that will go down to Manning. So the mother was out of town, so the dad picked him up in Omaha. They met down in Manning, no bed, nothing they could do for him, no bed. Here, this person is ready to, you know, get some help, you know.
Wants to.
Finally hit that bottom that where you have to go voluntarily. The options were take him to a park and have him, you know, be committed. It just, the options were so awful. So they took him back home, was going to take him down on Monday then for outpatient treatment, not even a space in outpatient.
Wow. This is in Manning?
Right.
Substance abuse?
Yes, yes.
We are expanding at nights. We're expanding another night.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, there is a waiting list.
Here we are, here we are, that crack we always talked about.
Manning's recognized that.
They're trying to get ahead of it, but, I mean, it's drinking out of a garden hose.
Yep, so, so right now. It is, and the reason I bring it up is so that the funding that we did give, it's imperative that we figure this out because they were wondering what happened to Jackson Recovery because they were going to use that as an option. I said, "It's not here anymore, it's gone." I guess they could run him to Sioux City every day.
Transportation and that. But you know what's crazy about even when we looked into expanding a satellite spot in Dennison through the substance abuse for Manning, and I'm putting on my hospital board hat, the funding, the reimbursement rate, because it was a satellite site, was so much less, we couldn't do it.
Couldn't afford it.
Couldn't afford it. But yet, if we expand where we're at and have to transport people in, then the reimbursement rate stays the same.
And they're still not great.
They're still not.
Still not great, even the, and that's, you know, that was part of the Jackson Recovery problem. The rent, you know, was eight hundred and fifty dollars a month, and you always have to have two people on staff. You can't just have one person, you know, because you never know when there's going to be an episode. So it's not safe, and then you're paying two people. But I just wanted to bring that to light, that it is really starting to snowball and it's hitting real close to home when you've got people that are, you know, Omaha says, well, you know, that probably your closest place to go is going to be Manning, so they, you know.
And yet the state is sitting on half of the opening funds. They divvied out half to the counties, and they have the other half to.
Well.
And I think they do recognize it. We did, when we did meet with Kelly Garcia, I mean, she recognized that there needs to be some changes in mental health and changes in substance abuse.
Buildings up a church, he said, and they empty it.
I just feel bad that when you find somebody at that, what they always say, you have to hit your bottom, at that bottom, ready for the help, ready to, and now we're just in a holding pattern of concern, you know, how they want help now, not next week, not, those are the situations where, what do you do? And here we are.
It's got to be frustrating for the family.
Oh, unbelievable. And then to find out that there isn't a mental, you know, there's nothing here in our biggest, yeah. So I think we need to keep opening up doors and looking at the rocks.
Talk to the hospital about it up here, or, I mean, Dave, you guys down there, I mean, is that something you operate?
We've been.
On campus, or is it off campus?
They did have a conversation with Dennison.
We've been in conversation with them. A lot of it, you know, that since we specialize in substance abuse, we're kind of the go-to place. It's transportation and referrals. And Aaron, I recognize that, and referring people to us, but then it's, how do you get them there?
Well, and if you, this person was taken by ambulance, unresponsive to the Crawford Memorial Hospital. They couldn't deal with it, then they went to Omaha. Omaha says, you know, keep him, you know, overnight, but he needs help. We're not, we're a hospital place. He should go for help would be back in your own community. And they meet at the door, you know, somebody met with them, but said, "There's no bed. Come back Monday, we'll do an outpatient." No, no outpatient available right now either. So that's the story put into a really small nutshell, just to bring it to our attention that.
And staffing becomes, is still an issue.
Still.
Just because you go to the city and they have a lot more beds.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of those beds aren't utilized because staff.
And even if this, and that's why it needs to be the behavioral rather than the mental because he's not meant, well, a little bit, but not. It's a.
It's a behavioral problem.
Yeah, it's a behavioral, behavioral. Do you possibly have a depression or an anxiety that goes along with it that could be addressed, that will be addressed once he can get to the right person?
So I always think back to that, the rat study. We had an ISAC event when they had brought in that. They talk about, they did this scientific study with these rats. They put these rats in a cage with nothing to do. And then they put a bowl of water with no medicine or no drugs in it, bowl of water with drugs in it. Rats got violent, drank out of the drug water all day long in the cage with nothing. Then they made this rat utopia cage with all kinds of things to do, and rats never drank the water with the drugs in it.
That interesting.
When they had a better life, more things to do, things to keep occupied with.
It's a vicious circle.
They kind of equated it back to when people are, have nothing, aren't able to, you know, have a home and things to do and a car and a good life.
You know, a good job, and it don't have to be a big Wall Street job, but a good job that does a lot for your dignity and you don't try to hide your sorrow.
Yep, yep.
You know, alcoholism. I just finished last night, I finished my after-cancer therapy treatment stuff, I'm graduating. Anyway, the others, thank you. The other, the other young guy, one of the other young guys in there, Joe, he was actually in. Well, somewhat of a locker, let him out for things like this. But he was in for substance abuse and, and actually alcohol was his primary addiction. And then that would lead to other crap, you know. And he got into all the hard stuff, you know, and, and he's, every now and then he'd, you know, go into that and he'd break down, and I mean, he could see that he wanted to be better. And he was going down to Jacksonville where he had friends after he gets out of this and, and got a welding job down there. Sounded like he must be a real good welder. I'm going to have to take his word for it, I'm sure he's at least good. But I think that that's, that's nailing it there. I mean, you know, when you've got things that keep you engaged in life, you don't hide from it.
But if you have, it's a disease and it's a struggle. And let's just say that these people had good jobs, but you wake up in the morning, you don't feel like going to work and you miss it too, and you get there, you don't produce. So it's just this vicious circle that you're just, but when you're ready for help, when you're ready, and there's no bed open, that's, we've got to figure that out somehow. I don't, nobody has the answer, I don't think. Does anybody have the answer?
Not here at this table.
Not at your other hat that you wear, other than to expand.
We're trying to, we're expanding nice to serve the growing list of people that need help.
You guys have to be careful on how fast you grow it too.
We got to be able to maintain our level of service that we provide.
So that's a party.
And we also have to look at it on a financial standpoint. You know, we have to be cautious if we grow so large and then all of a sudden it's not fully funded, or funded even less.
Funded even less. But.
And that's what we.
Take the scenario of some individuals. They don't have a job because they can't get to work every day. So thus, they don't have insurance because they can't afford to have it on their own. They no longer have a job. How do we, it just, and so even to get that help, who's going to pay? It's not free. It, I, we can talk about it forever, but I think that the fact that we brought up, we have a homeless person, we have somebody without a bed, and then trying to, you know, even with all these statements that they have, it talks about Medicare funding and juvenile detention, you know, trying to figure out how to, how to get the balance. So they're working on it at the state level, I guess, is the good news, but it moves so slowly that we always talked about someone's going to fall between the cracks before they get it figured out.
And just think, we are a small world county. To get a step larger, go to Des Moines and look at how that amplifies. Go to, and go to Chicago, or you can imagine in New York, I mean, just.
Probably couldn't promise you could get a bed in Chicago back in a date's notice.
Oh, thanks.
Probably not. So that's my little report today. I wield my camera.
Well, thank you.
I don't have it turned off. I got a new phone.
Did you have, you have media on tonight or last week? Why don't you go next? Okay, I was on.
It was actually a busy week last week. I'll just touch base on what our conversation is, but given my source in the governor's office is that mental health is a focus of the governor in the upcoming years. So I guess it'll be interesting to see what she brings forward, since it is going to be a focus of hers. Also, I know I talked, I think, individually with David and with Kyle, but as far as that concern that I talked about last week with Wesco is that it, from discussion with the Department of Health and Human Services at the state of Iowa, is that it does stem from the Department of Justice, the federal government, and all coming from Glenwood and what happened down there. And they're taking those people from Glenwood and putting them out into the public and then putting them out in eight-person homes. And the Department of Justice says, "No, you can only do four-person homes." And we're going to make that four-person homes statewide, and eventually we're going to go national with it. And they wanted to sign, have the state of Iowa sign, I believe it's called a consent decree, meaning we consent to what you want to do, and there's, the governor is not signing that. And so it's going to be an ongoing litigation thing, perhaps way down the road. It's not anything that's going to be happening soon. But I think it just shows that when the federal government comes in and tries to dictate to the state and then dictate to things like Wesco as to how many people you can have in a home, it's just, that's extremely frustrating.
But knowing that that's, you know, coming down the pipe, how did Wesco decide to buy more houses? Or, you know, because they.
Right, I mean, you would, you would hope, once again, that common sense would prevail and they would, if they would do something like that, meaning dictate something like that, that they would give you two years, three years, four years in order to prepare and, and, you know, go through the process of doing that. Of course, when you're dealing with the federal government, common sense and federal government are usually two things you don't say in the same sentence.
No.
So. I, I don't know. I think Wesco, when I talked to Clay, because when I, I found out Wednesday morning, so I just quick ran in and told Clay, and Clay was like, "Oh, that's really good news. It's something we don't have to worry about immediately." It's something that my sources said, "Hey, it's something that Wesco needs to be aware of." But also, it's that the federal government hasn't told the state of Iowa that we're going to reduce your Medicaid funding if you don't do this, which may be a step that I guess they could go. And if they would do that, would that persuade, you know, a governor to say, "Okay, now I'll sign it if you're going to reduce my funding?" But, so that's just something that, moving forward, everyone needs to be aware of it, but also aware that, hey, this is going to be an ongoing, long-term litigation thing.
But what it tells me is they're going to have to have more places to move to one of every house?
Well, like, like Deidre said down at Wesco, is these, those five people that live in the homes, they're family to each other. And so which one, when you go there, do you say, "Okay, which one of you wants to leave your family?"
I couldn't think about that either.
You know, so.
And some of them have been together a long time.
Exactly.
I, and they help each other, and they, what weakness one has, the other one has a strength in, and there's one that cooks and one that cleans and.
So, I mean, Wesco had prepared a letter that they had sent to me, and I then in turn got that to the head of the Health and Human Services. So at least they are aware what Wesco's concerns are.
Yeah.
Because last week I had Imagination Station on Tuesday, Popcorn on Wednesday, IT on Thursday, and Hungry Canyons on Friday. And Imagination Station, the biggest thing there, I guess, would just be that the twenty-eight E agreement between county, city, and a school, is that we are going to make some changes in that as far as the rent. We haven't raised the rent since two thousand and ten. And, well, on me notes to me, but we pay for the upkeep of the facility as far as the cleaning is concerned. And so we pay the janitors, we pay for all the cleaning supplies, and that has gone up since two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-three is up about twelve to thirteen hundred dollars a month. And so we're going to make those adjustments and raise the rents. We're sending out notification. I thought, actually, I would have it by the end of last week is what Mike kind of thought, but evidently he didn't get anything from the attorney, and then I'm going to send it on to Colin. I told Colin that he'd be getting that just to go through it, the updating of the twenty-eight E agreement.
So I mean, each entity is going to have to.
Each entity is going to have to agree.
Okay, but.
Are we paying more?
Are we paying more or the rent?
No, the rent that we charge, the Children's Imagination Station and Head Start will go up, not the thirteen thousand that we gave. That's just only.
Great, you know, in comparison to other daycare centers, what, I mean, are they lower priced? Because can they offer daycare at a lower price?
I don't know.
Because they, they have relatively low costs.
I don't know how they compare to what they're charging the parents, is what you're getting at, right? Versus what somebody else is charging the parents, I don't know.
It's gone up.
Because if you, if you don't have to pay for any maintenance, cleaning, low rent, you would think that they would be able to pass that savings on to the parents.
No.
Right, but I just, I wondered, I was just thinking out loud.
I can tell you.
And if not, where's it going?
It's gone.
I think a lot of them think it's like.
You have to pay more these days to get, you know, used to be gets, used to be that, you know, high school girls would come in after school and help out with the, but there's, there's none of that anymore.
I know, one of, one of the things that we're going to do, evidently, the, they have received an email from someone that's seeking out to do some cleaning. Because I even said too, what we pay, about fifteen hundred dollars a month, they said, "I can't believe we can't contract with someone." Then they do the cleaning and they supply all the cleaning supplies. Just get some bids out there, some people that would want to come in and clean. And so that's something that they're also.
Wesco had that group. I want to run into that.
I don't know if Wesco was still, Wesco, I don't think they can.
I think Wesco, a guy from Wesco does United Bank of Iowa.
Yeah, but he's probably independent.
Oh, it's independent?
I think it's independent.
Yeah, because I think that's the big change there, when they took the talent deal away and all that. So the people had to be out working in the public, not.
Why that candy redemption thing shut down.
Yeah, because they didn't want them working where they were comfortable working. They wanted, and, you know, and it took a transition. And you see a lot of great clients after doing great things. There's Fairway. There's Fairway Group, they're just always, that's where I see them all the time. Always got a smile and always talk, isn't it?
Always upbeat.
Oh, yeah. I, I feel better talking with them guys. It's always good.
Daniel will track me down through Walmart if he sees my hat walking around.
So I guess that was a good move, but at first it was like.
Structure like that. You know what I mean?
There's a few of them that I know that are in there. Not our position to make them call.
Uh, Wednesday popcorn for tap. You know, Kyle, what exactly we, we raised? Plus some canned goods, correct that.
Good job.
That we got.
Do you have to deliver anything?
We did not.
Well, I did take, uh, the flyer and Pat took it to the banks.
We were ready to though.
Most jeans in there. Holding something over their heads and.
I got a hundred dollars for six bags of popcorn. So there you go.
That was a fair price.
I thought that was a fair price too.
And as far as the IT meeting, Dave and I were there, so I guess the biggest thing that. Um, I got out of the meeting, Terry was there also, was that, uh. We had talked about taking the. Total amount of money that it would cost to, to switch over and taking that all out of the IT budget. And then having the IT budget get it directly from the departments. And the, as far as the cost is concerning, currently we're paying about seven fifty to eight hundred a month. Plus a four thousand dollar a year maintenance fee. So divide that by twelve, that's three thirty-three. So we're paying roughly. About eleven hundred dollars a month and moving forward, our monthly cost would be eleven hundred and thirteen dollars.
And when would that?
We would, we will notify Frontier. I think our contract is up February twenty-fourth. Was that? Well, it wasn't March twenty-fourth, we're gonna notify them in, in February.
Right, I think that.
I believe that's it.
Kinda try to coincide, so we give them a notice.
Right, our contract date with Frontier is on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. So we wanted to have the system in place by February twenty twenty-four, notify Frontier by February twenty-third. That we are not renewing with them.
And to me, Craig and, and Terry was there as well. I like that we kinda cleaned up. Maybe some phones that weren't being used, or we will be through this, like supervisors, we don't need a phone. Nobody's here.
We have a phone?
It's listed in the phone book.
Rings in our office. So we, uh. He's supposed to, isn't, he's supposed to fine tune that to make sure that we're meeting the needs of each department, but yet. Not overdoing it. So we're only finding the lines we need and getting the phone we need.
We have fifty-six phone lines. Prior to this. And I think we're gonna do, we're signing contracts.
What is our?
That's probably current monthly fee.
Yeah, so it's not gonna be any increasing cost.
So who are we going with? Who are we going with?
Wallex.
So. How many lines did you say?
I see that.
Fifty-five.
We had fifty-six, now we have fifty-five.
I guess we only cleaned up one. Ours. And I'm going back on that, that was a big concern, um. I was getting quite a few phone calls for people that were called in for jury duty or supposed to call in and I know what to do and they couldn't.
Couldn't get a hold.
Get a hold of anybody and. Um, there's a lot of concern like, hey, I don't wanna get in trouble because I'm supposed to call in, but I'm literally legitimately trying to.
Yep. There were days people call and wonder if the courthouse is closed.
I mean, them days are gonna happen probably regardless with any carrier, but it seems like they're pretty free for like our current period here. And I just, the, the notice, the work that I see. At them. And it's not so much the people in Denison's fault, it's where they're taking their orders from. You know.
Lot of cut lines. Back in the day, they used to cut lines, then lines.
Well, yeah, but the way they fix them, I mean, they, we've got one, they finally buried it, it would just, they'd throw it out in our cornfield. So then we'd throw it out back and get. And finally you get tired of that, but I don't want you just like, well. Every piece of tillage equipment is gonna chew that out of. So good, I think it'd be a good move. I mean, I think it'd be.
Seems more stable this route.
Frontier's kind of, I think, struggling. In my eye, struggling out.
And lastly, I guess, uh, Hungry Canyons, they only, they meet quarterly and this is the first time that I could actually. Do the conflicts, get to a meeting. But, uh, Paul may even mention it, but he just, cause he's the chair of the executive. But, uh, they have, they have a budget of about five hundred thousand dollars a year. And they actually have about a million dollars of cash. And so they went out to the counties and really stressed that, hey, we're looking.
For projects.
For projects, exactly. We want to do something because it's hard for them to go to the legislature and keep requesting more funds if. They're not using it.
Yeah.
And so they really, like I said, stressed, um, to everyone there that if you've got something that you don't even know. If you think it might qualify, let us know. And, and they went through the, uh, application process and so far, as a newbie, it was nice. To go through a meeting like that. So I went, I went down there with Ben and, and Brent Johnson. Down there and.
Where was the meeting at?
It was in Oakland.
In Oakland. And that guy came one time and explained it. It was very interesting.
Who's that?
Gentleman. John.
Yeah, I mean, and Crawford County, I mean, you, we all know Paul does such a good job in, but Crawford County. When, when they would show slides, slides of projects that they've done, now this was in Crawford County, this was in Crawford County, this was in Crawford County. And so it's nice to know that we have that Paul's out there utilizing every source of funding that is available out there.
Well, now, every now and again, you'll see this is a Hungry Canyons project and it's like, oh, you know, it has a nice little sign by the.
So every county in, that are a member county has the same.
Exactly, exactly. And there's thirteen, and there's thirteen counties.
But, and all, all, I mean, Crawford County, other than thirteen, there's probably a higher percentage that have these Hungry Canyons.
The hungry, yeah.
You get in your lower elevation, you're flatter ground. Or really topography and. Or they have drainage districts that tax for a lot of the, a lot of that stuff. And so, yeah. Hundred dollars a year, I think it's a good investment.
Yeah, and there's individuals. As an individual, you can apply for some funding from Hungry Canyons also, working through the NRCS. So I mean, it's not just government agencies that can apply. It's cities that can apply. It's individuals that can apply. So there's a separate, separate application process if you're a. Community or a county organization versus the, uh, individual. So. So that is all I have.
The East Soldier digs into his one bank there. You know, uh, when. When, uh, human was farming that, he said, I lose two to three rows a year to that. You know, eating into the bank and take two or three rows of corn every ten years.
That's, it's, it's, it's huge.
That'd be nice to throw some of that. Quartzite on that bank. That was, that was, and that was, I went on that tour where we went up where all that quartzite comes from. That was a pretty neat thing up there. Anyway, that was for Hungry Game. Yeah, that's an excellent program, I think.
Yeah. That's it.
Okay, that's all you got? Mr. Schultz.
Uh, Conservation Board. Wednesday night. Dr. Chuck currently have three employees out there that are part of the union.
Okay.
I don't know if we need to just ask Aaron if we can just. I don't know how, you know, I don't know how it works. Do you have to have them involved to negotiate or not?
Who, who would we talk to?
Well, I would say we have asked.
Ask them where their attorney is or?
Or is that, I guess, the lead like, oh, what are we talking about? Solid ways.
Do we need, I mean. It's really not an art.
I don't know.
Is it an art? Cause I mean, they don't dress us, I mean, we just.
Does this board negotiate with them in the past?
But I just don't know. I mean. I don't know what we need to.
Initiate it?
Initiate it. But I would think that's be up to them to initiate it, cause if they don't, I'm just assuming they're happy with what they got, so. These rolled on, but. Uh, I know Chuck, that's why I go a little late, we're a couple of positions could become administrative, so it'd be gotten to one person, so.
Not much of a union at that point.
Nope, they probably won't.
They don't. But currently there's three, so if, I mean, if they wanna negotiate, I think. But I was just wondering if we could just say, hey. Like the last time I was in on negotiating, they came in and I said, well, this is what Secondary Roads got. And they said, okay, that's what we'll take.
Maybe it'd be.
I don't know if we could just do that.
Use our attorney instead of bringing in Aaron.
Exactly what we just did.
That's what I mean. Have, have Colin write itself a contract, they, what they agreed to.
He was doing all the cheap, no sense given, and I like Aaron, he's a nice guy, but no sense giving him. Four thousand dollars, we're gonna throw up some paperwork, Colin.
Terry, you said it's just wait.
Could Chuck put a bug in their ear for those three and have one of the three contact us?
I think he probably could.
That way, but where are you gonna go to?
Well, through a transition, kinda foreseeing the future with the, someday Chuck will probably retire. I'm thinking. So we're trying to get things in place to be able to have a smooth transition into retirement. Uh, then moving the scale house person to full-time is now starting to do all the billing. So it's kinda more than, to me, more than an hourly position when you're in charge of collecting funds for the county. And, uh, Travis, he's kinda taken over a lot of the DNR and all that stuff and Chuck, so that's kinda more of an administrative position as well.
The wish to pardon or they pay that?
They're paid out solid.
Absolutely.
Right, irregardless if they're administrative. So it, it's almost becoming. You know, them two are really gonna replace Chuck. And then Terry's office has graciously helped with a lot of the collection.
I mean, we do their payroll, we do their claims.
So I mean, that all helped a lot to work through this transition. So it's just that ongoing. Attempt to.
Sorry about that.
Fill some shoes, you know, that Chuck said. You know, he did a lot and did all that. And I mean, not all of them.
What department is Chuck?
Paid for out of landfill.
And partially out of.
A pool, when he does, when he helps with budgeting and finance stuff.
Is he hourly?
Yeah, I think so, yep.
Yeah. He, I mean. When he moved up here, he took a paycheck, paycheck, cause he thought that was appropriate. Who does that?
He's our best taxpayer in the county.
So that's, so I would, we're thinking of the transition to maybe just one out here to keep, put to an. Administrative or management type goal, so.
Okay, should go get salary.
Something like that, yeah, we're trying to.
Gotcha.
And then, uh. Well, Craig and. I gotta dig a little bit this morning, trying to figure out. No farm bill yet, so there's no CRP contracts available. And we have a county farm that is not under contract, cause we. Set serve notice.
Serve notice.
But I don't, my thought is, do we wanna get tied into another contract or can we have a custom farm or share crop or something for a year? Until the farm bill gets, so I got Martha digging in to see if we can even do that.
It might be a year.
Cause if, if our intention is to put it in CRP, we don't wanna be in the same boat that we are today.
Right, we don't wanna be tied down into a contract with a rental contract.
Unless like you said, maybe you can add some, if you had to add something to the contract that said.
Yeah, we reserve all rights to enroll in the CRP programs.
When it comes available.
And, yeah. But I don't know what Iowa land laws would actually.
Right.
If that would supersede some of that, as, as we found out through this last process that. You know, we really didn't have a leg to stand on. It runs his, until first of March.
Yeah. That's why you're thinking like, more like a shared crop or.
Yeah, just our custom farm.
You still bid that out, a customer?
I would think we'd have sort of thing. Without.
Right.
Without having a bunch of pitchforks and. Figure that out. So I think they're having, that's what I think Martha hopefully will be able to tell us.
We still have trees out there.
But the other option with that custom farm and I mean, ISU's pretty good at setting rates. Or custom rates.
Oh, sure.
So I mean. I would think, hey, this is what we're gonna pay. Who's interested in doing it for that? Somebody do it. I mean.
Right.
That's, that's it.
I really didn't have too much other. Did everybody see the email from Kylie? You reading through that?
I did talk to Steve Kickle this morning, about kind of a little bit, so.
I wondered what his response was to it.
Well, he had one.
I'm sure he did.
I can share that with you.
Okay, well, we'll wait till after or something. Anyway, or after our regular.
It's an interesting day.
Yeah. Paul, please proceed.
Okay, sounds good. Good morning, everyone. There's something to be said about being extraordinarily normal or ordinary. Yeah.
Good to blend in, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, I, I kinda coined that when I was out in, in Los Angeles with my son. I, I said to my wife, I said, I don't think there's anything wrong with being extraordinarily ordinary, because after being out there.
Yep.
There's nothing ordinary. We'll just be good at being ordinary, ordinary. Anyhow, um. The, uh, Box Colvert scheduled for that January seventeenth letting. Uh, again, it's not a whole lot new there, just hoping for, uh. Uh, good results and we're staking the temporary easement. I, I think whoever bids, I think is gonna go to work right away probably. So we're getting the stakes in the ground, getting the post for the detour, getting everything.
Picking different day to start this year.
Yeah.
Make it the first.
Highly unlikely it will have another issue like we had. It was, you know, we learned from those things, so.
Let's redo.
Uh, in Alameda shop, nothing new there. Um, great crew, just, you know, we got the crypto club, had some O's. We gotta do a little switching around, but we've got that here, so we'll be doing some demo work on that. We're with that and taking that out for a while. Uh, the bridge crew. Um, there was a science, we got a text this morning, the science of children at play, sign right in front of the bridge.
I guess sends the guys all picture of it.
Those guys have fun.
Where's that at?
That's how it goes, right across the campground. Uh, you know, so you have the trust in place, you're gonna put the deck, you know, and probably be done by Thursday.
You gotta look at it, you just keep knocking projects out, I mean.
Yeah, I told Tim, I said, send me, cause he sends me snaps. I said, well, send me a, a picture.
Regular pictures.
So I can actually share that with someone, but.
Those big smiles.
That bridge, I think, is gonna be somewhat iconic to the park, cause you can see it from the campground. It's right there and you look across the lake and there's this nice tr- trust bridge and. You know, if you ever do a new logo, that would be something nice to incorporate into the conservation logo, Rainbow Trust Bridge, cause there's three of them down in parks. There's two out here and one down in Nelson Park. Yeah, the bridges of Crawford County.
Hey, that's a good idea.
So we got two more of them out in rural area.
Uh, yes. Checkneers and then there's another one down right off of county line, yeah. And then there's one sitting in the yard and so that's.
Were you, which one, were you talking about which checkneer?
Well, there's one by Dan Checkneers. Yeah, south of Anellen back to the east.
That's the Aster Bridge.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so I'm gonna have him polish the plaque up on this one, so it kind of pops and stands out.
Cool.
Put some, we're gonna put all new bank on it, so it's gonna look nice.
It will be.
Great place for senior photos or family pictures when you're out in the park.
Actually do a ribbon cutting or something.
Can.
That'd be fun.
They do an outstanding.
Yeah, that, that, that's not a bad idea.
We need them for a wrap in the paper.
Well, he's going, he, he, he's gonna do one, so, but I I'll tell him that maybe the board would be going. Not maybe, you guys would be interested in going out, just having a photo out there.
I know where to find some ribbon either.
Sounds good, has anybody got a big scissors?
At CDC, they don't cut for darn, but they're there.
And I get a, and I get a wrapped Christmas presents with them, huh? Um, so yeah, really, really nice project out there, and they're gonna shut down, just basically start fabricating for next year's bridge projects. Put stuff down around the yard. Uh, the, uh, I had four, there's the, uh, resolution transferring funds from the rural. From the rural basic to the secondary road, so this is half of the rural basic money that'll come to the secondary road department. So the most you can transfer is three dollars and three cents. And we try to capture as most of that as possible. And, um, so this is half of that, and then the board has always done. A direct payment from the rural basic fund, because you can't transfer, the state restricts the, the level that you can transfer. But the board has always then paid for crushed limestone directly to the tune of a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars.
Which has been a great.
Been a great.
Great way.
Great move, yeah, yeah, and so shows the board's support of the roads and it helps us get a lot more crushed limestone on there, this is what's.
Especially in the springtime when you have to target a lot of those areas, so we're getting phone calls saying, hey, I got a weak spot.
It's made a lot of difference on the, on the quality of the surfacing.
I make a motion to approve item number four, the resolution transferring the one million three hundred eighty five thousand from rural basic. Fund to secondary road fund.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion for a resolution to transfer one thou- one million three hundred eighty five thousand dollars from rural basic. To the secondary road by Mr. Schultz and signed by Ms. Hayden, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Hayden.
Aye.
Mr. Dozer.
Aye.
Mr. Mulbar.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Here votes aye.
Thank you, I did talk to Sherry, you know, so I'll check with her to make sure that there's financially no issues there, but.
We do the transfer.
But you, you do the transfer?
Right.
Okay, she just has to make sure there's money available.
Yeah, it's just a transfer from one fund to another fund.
Yeah, 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 that's all it is, a transfer.
It's just a transfer.
But, um, I do try to check with her to the cases.
Unless you're spending on spending one point four million tomorrow or the next week, then it's not a.
It's just kind of ongoing, it's just we do half of it, we do half of it now. Yeah, so, uh, the, uh, and next, I mean, you know, I could talk last week, just kind of getting projects ready for next year. All these are coming going, then next, we started, starting in next year right away. And so, you know, we're busy getting, getting all those things, I think we're gonna have, we're gonna have full slate breeding projects and there's never. Bridges, bridges and culverts aren't an issue, but we are gonna have a full slate breeding projects coming through, so.
I have had Paul, a couple of people contacting me about highway thirty nine to Deloitte.
That is gonna be done next year.
Okay.
It's gonna be done next year, yeah, that actually, I mean, oh sorry, PAC committee, yeah, yeah, and you know.
This stretch down here probably won't.
Well, the one from Deloitte to Dennison's already done, sent from Deloitte to Worth, all the way up. But it's been bought up a number of times and meetings that I've been at, it's.
Yeah.
I have to be careful what I say, it's less than desirable to drive. Needs work.
But the, I think they're waiting on.
But that is next, next year.
It is in twenty twenty four, yeah, that's where I'm hopeful that, you know, whoever gets it, we can maybe get it talked into doing a batch plan later.
It'd be nice.
I think that's in the January.
Have you been talking to Dakin about that?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. But anyhow, um, so nighttime drives, I I didn't know if all of you knew, I mean, we drive our, our roads, some counties drive all of them. Um, we just do, there's a portion of them every four years, you know, kind of a four year cycle, so back in nineteen, you know, twenty seventeen, actually it was about. Four or five years before that, the, uh, the federal D O T came out with some retro reflectivity requirements, standards. And they wanted everybody to change everything, get everything up to speed by twenty seventeen, which is what's gonna happen, okay? I mean, so we just kind of dug our heels in and said, we'll change the signs as the signs need to be changed, but we're not gonna take perfectly good, perfectly good signs off of the post. Because, you know, the new regulation, we at least have something out there, so over time, we continue to upgrade. And we've by and large got most of the signs now converted to the high intensity prismatic, and so, you know, just a kind of an example of. You know, as you look at them at night, you know, here's, here's just aluminum substrate, some of them you can't even set. Okay, and as you go, you know, from, from left to right, um, you can see the difference in sign facing. And so there's engineering grade, there's high intensity prismatic, and then there's this diamond grade, which is what the D O T uses on their high environment roads. We use the high intensity prismatic, which would be easy, this one right here on our roadways, they're lower volume, you know, and they perform very well. And they're much lower cost than the, than the diamond grade, so, um, so, you know, we.
Is that where you see all the diamond in the reflection, is that what you're talking?
Yes, it's, it's, it's a prism, it reflects, it reflects the light back, and so that's why they call them high intensity prismatic. Uh, you know, so here's the results of, uh, three hundred and eighty six signs, you know, that green is good, yellow's for, uh, poor and then. They're fair and then the red is poor, we only have like twelve of them that really, you know, we use the eye tech. You know, so we, we look at, we look at signs and, you know, have the same people drive it and they look at signs. You know, they have a reflectometer, you have to get up and check every one of them, but I don't know if it warrants all that effort, so we, we drive them. And I think our signs look pretty good. Yeah. Yeah, it depends on where it's facing, if it's facing the north, it's gonna last a lot longer than if it's facing the south, and it's just the truth, I mean, south. And west facing signs will fade much quicker than the ones facing. Oh, yeah.
The ones in south and west are general.
Can you get five, ten years on it even on the ones that are facing south and west, do you get?
Oh, yeah, yeah, good high intensity prismatic, we'll get over ten years out, as long as they don't get shot out. So, uh. So, so then. Oh man, I bought some of them up here that people have shot up, it's just crazy what happens, but it, 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 in all the years I've been here. It always happens and it never seems to change, you know, I think it's kind of a rite of passage for certain people. I don't know.
In twenty years, those are the people, the ones that do that are the people that'll be bitching about their property tax.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, but it's just, it, it never seems to change, you know, there's always somebody shooting signs up. Um, but anyhow, so we've replaced two hundred and fifty signs in the last twelve months, and so there's this sign replacement program. Kind of a one time deal where you can apply statewide basis, get up to ten thousand dollars for replacement of signs. And so we've got it, we've, we've got all of this, we've got a lot of stop signs in here, a lot of stop ahead signs, no passing zone. Um, so there's only certain sign types that qualify, but I haven't been able to get the list of signs that qualify yet, so when I go to the conference next week, I'm gonna count lean on those people. Give us a list, and then we'll fill out the application, we get up to ten thousand dollars and it's first come, first served, so on July second at midnight. We're pushing about.
Them signs that you do replace, maybe they don't meet the standards for the speed on our roadways. I'm gonna use Charter Oak for example, you come through town, through their farmer market extension through there, and there are signs at night, they're not even there. I mean, is there, here, we got these signs, can we offer to the, or do, I mean, I know there's a value to them, we're getting them. I didn't know, if you get offered, build a city say, hey, we took these signs of our system, can you guys use any of these? I mean, they still have all the same opportunities, the cities come, sure comply for that grant as well.
Hey, the practical side of me says that's a great idea, the. Legal side of me says that's probably a bad idea, and you probably should put up a sign that meets the current standard, if you're gonna put a new one up.
Well, I just. They haven't met standard since nineteen seventy.
Oh, you, you, you're absolutely right on.
And they can't afford to meet the standard.
Yeah, or, I don't know, I mean. You know, over time, if you, if you make an effort to replace certain ones, you know, the stop signs are obviously the most important ones, but, um. I guess we could allow them to come and do what they, what they choose, they could withdraw our salvage. You know, but I don't want to be a part of encouraging to put up a sign that doesn't meet standards, I mean, I guess I could. Anything's better, kind of goes back to that, oh, are you, it's better than what we had. But yet, you know, Mr. Engineer, the standard says it should be this, but you allow this to be put up in lieu there. You know, so we put stop signs up, they always beat the current standard, you know, because there are certain signs. Right, that have more importance than others, and so.
They're all important, your chevrons, your stop signs, they all kind of, they're more to the top of the.
That's an important thing though, like, here, here you are, going after grant money. And I don't, they probably don't even realize that exists.
They should, because if they're part of the league of cities, I mean, they, you know, because we talked about that, they have these, these safety, um. Day long kind of a safety circle rider type deal where they do presentations and, and they do the same thing for cities.
Yeah, that's true.
And so cities, if they're engaged with their association or whatever, they should know about that, in fact, there's, you know, I'm gonna give it to Jess, it's a work zone safety. Free, basically, you get up to like ten thousand dollars in free work zone safety signs, which would be our type three barricades or work road, work ahead signs. And so I'm gonna give her that, you know, I think they have applied for that in the past, but you just have to, you know, change the date on the application, keep submitting, you know, look for somebody who might get it. Uh, this particular thing, I mean, there's, I think, two million dollars, and it is, it's a first come, first served basis, up to ten thousand dollars, all you have to do is log. The sign that you replaced, the date you replaced it, and that's it, you don't have a record of that, and we, and we got all that right here, so. All we have to do is just figure out how they want that data submitted to them, in an application, and push the button on January second, and hope that we're in line soon enough.
Okay.
So.
I'll bet we're gonna be.
Well, we'll try.
You're on it.
So, um, and that's just one year, then next year it'll go to the six districts in the state, and they're gonna, they've got, they haven't done this for a couple of years now. So they've got an extra pool of money, so they're opening it up statewide, and next year it'll be by on a district, so like district one. Will be the only one that can sit, apply for it, then it'll be district two and then three, or however they're gonna rotate through that, um, so.
Enjoy the conference.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be here on Tuesday and start something Wednesday afternoon.
You go along or?
Ben, Ben and I, yeah, yeah, so, always a good opportunity to network and.
Give Uncle Tom and Wade Weiss a hard time for me.
Oh, yeah.
My nephew should probably be with your uncle Tom, so.
Really?
There he is, uh.
Working up there. Oh, really?
I didn't know that, when did he start?
Oh, I think the last year probably. Uh, Chase Pecker.
Cool.
Danek was the engineer of the, if there's any connection.
Oh, okay.
U C K E R T.
No, not architect.
On the website.
Sketch, sketch at best.
Just thought, seen an opportunity for him, sorry.
No, that's right, you don't put me on the spot, yeah.
Okay. Okay, there we go, all right, next up is Mr. Malone, could you please come up, Craig?
I brought another gentleman with me.
Okay, I didn't know his name.
Care up here, that's fine.
Chris, what is Craig?
Craig, Chris Flady. Hey, nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you, L G, nice to meet you.
Haven't seen you for a hot minute.
Yeah, right. We wanted to come and just kind of go over some preliminary numbers for the renewal, uh, also wanted to introduce Chris to you, um, at the end of this month. Um, I will be leaving Hoffman Agency, so Chris, uh, has actually been here longer than I have. So, um, they're experienced guy, stands and out of everything, and he'll be taking over.
Get a lot of better help and stress that too, so. Where were you before, are you with Hoffman?
I still am, yes, I'm in the Middleton. Almost nineteen years, sorry. Born and raised from Middleton.
So, um, we've been working with Blue Cross and I've been filling him in on some things, and, you know, um, you know, you guys have obviously been great. To work with and appreciate everything, um, but I wanted to bring him here, introduce him to you guys, and then meet, uh, Amy as well. And then, right now, when we talk to Carla. Overall claims, um, are down just a little bit from this time last year. But the costs are up, so the number is looking down, but the cost is up.
And the paper you sent out last, they go, inflationary is just kind of kicking our butt on some of that.
Yeah, so, um, she's, you know, looking at trend currently, trend is ten percent. And so that's kind of what, I mean, there's three, there's three months left. Um, for them to kind of calculate some numbers and things like that, look at claims, but as of right now. It's looking pretty standard to, to trend right now, at ten percent.
And when he says trend, that means kind of national, what they're, you know, what they're, what all the groups are looking at.
Do you remember what was it last year?
Nine point.
I thought it was, she said similar.
It was very similar to what it was, yeah, we've been working, we're getting some reports and kind of seeing how things are going, um, you know, we don't have. Obviously access to the funding, um, is that, what, the balance?
It continues to drop. Not rapidly, but it is dropping.
Um, just slowly, so.
There's a hole in the dam, not a really big one, but.
Um, costs are up about two hundred thousand dollars, uh, first time last year.
Might be one of our biggest problems.
Yeah, well, just listening to your conversations earlier, just like you were talking to Medicare, I mean, just, you know, everything's going up, so, I mean, every. Just no matter how you look at it, nurses are getting more, clinics are getting more, so I mean, costs are costing more, so the surgery costs and, and just. All of this, you know, it's all part of the trend, right? I mean, every, everything's costing more, unfortunately. All the way around from every, every angle.
I said milk went down, but. I don't think that's gonna affect our hospital bill yet.
No.
Strong bones might help eventually, drink more milk.
Uh, but yeah, I guess we just want to, you know, if there's any questions that we can answer, I mean, that kind of give you maybe a starting point for, for budgeting. Um, every month the reports will get updated and might have a little bit better idea, but right now that's kind of what they're, they're estimating.
I was a week ago asked the question if there was a, another rider that we could put on our, for like major medicals, you know, to help. If we had a major, oh, brain surgery or something that's gonna be, you know, I mean, but our stop loss and everything, do we need that or?
Well, that's kind of what the stop loss is there for, you know, to limit you to about forty five thousand dollars.
Okay.
But you know, there's, I mean, now would be the time to start looking into some, some other options too, do you want to look at raising the deductible, do you want to look at, um. And we talked about H S A at one time, maybe that, you know.
Right, and that usually correlates with a high deductible.
Exactly.
Is an H S A.
I mean, it, it takes a lot of education. I'm on one and so is my wife, and, you know, she's used to those twenty five dollar copay bills and now they're, you know, a hundred and twenty one, so.
Right, I'm, I'm a huge component of H S As, I've sold lots of them for a lot of years.
We went to it at the bank and, of course, at the beginning, everybody's all, you know, and once you get used to it.
Once you get used to it, they're not terrible.
And I was with the city when they went.
H S A has so many more, um, benefits to a flex plan or a, a, you know, cafeteria plan or whatever. So, you know, with the ability for them to, an employee is who I'm referring to, to be able to carry it with you when you leave. And then use it for, you know, some of your medical expenses that you're experiencing as a retired person or.
Got it.
That kind of situation.
You know, it does, dental, vision, I mean, there's a lot of things that you can use. You know, it does, dental, vision, I mean, there's a lot of things that you could use that HSA money for. And maybe that's an option, too, to look at and say, okay, you know, we're gonna implement a. Throw this out there, a thirty five hundred dollar HSA option, but the county would contribute X amount per employee.
Right.
To soften the blow, but I mean, yeah.
Exactly.
City of Mapleton, we're doing an HSA a couple of years, and they fund quite a bit of it, but it ended up working out where, you know, they were. Saving money even by, even funding, actually, we funded a hundred percent of the deductible for the first couple of years, then they can back off if they want. Um, talking about deductibles, if you go on the ACA side right now. Actually, like with Wellmark, their standard deductible on a bronze plan is ninety two hundred dollars. So, and you start talking silver and gold, gold is still seventy five hundred dollars, so. It may definitely be time to start moving the deductible, because the two thousand, three thousand dollar, those days are over.
Yeah.
Way, way over. It's more about promoting your people to, you know, healthier, a lot of the HSAs will push. Um, more health related stuff, wanting, um, well, like ours, I'm on one now, and I, I can earn three dollars a day. I mean, every plan's got a little bit of. Of different things, but for walking and some of that benefits. Also, the other thing about an HSA is, when it's their money. They tend to not spend it as much as if it's your money, right? I don't care if I got a deductible, five hundred dollars, I'm gonna go get the surgery.
That's right.
When it's their money, they tend to not spend it quite as easy if they can use it for something else. Keep in mind, you can use your HSA money for children's wisdom teeth that are coming out at eighteen years old, that's. Three thousand dollars, I just had that happen, that's why I know that number. Um, they can use it for, can use it for any family member, even if they're not on the plan. So, it's kind of nice.
Gives you some flexibility.
Absolutely.
How did it work with Mapleton as far as implementation to switch over? Did you have to wait till the end of the fiscal year, or did you just?
So, we went on, you know, there, uh, July one, just I'm assuming just like you guys are, so that's when we implemented it, and we just switched it to then. Deductibles always run January first to to December thirty first, always, every health plan that you've ever been on, that's when your deductibles run. So, um, it's just something you implement, we'll put on a meeting, it's not a problem, and explain how it goes, I mean. Wellmark will have an HSA, so they'll, they'll do a carryover deductible.
So, it would be hard for us to implement it by January first, twenty twenty four? You would want to probably go July.
Yeah, I would go on your, yeah, because you're gonna do it when your renewal is. Because you, are they, are they July renewal?
We're July.
Yeah, that's when we'll, that's, if we were gonna look at this, we'd start talking February, March, for a July renewal.
Deductibles run January through December, so when you change in July.
Yep.
How does that work?
So, if they, whatever they got for a deductible, whatever they've met, that'll carry over.
Okay.
So, if they've got a thousand dollars, it'll just roll in, and if you do a thirty five hundred dollar HSA, they've met first thousand, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
We did it.
It, it becomes a, I'm not gonna say it's a little bit of a pain in the butt the first year because of that. In a perfect world, if you, if your plan rolled over July or January one, sure, but it doesn't, so, and you don't want to try switching minstering that.
Well, it's kind of, yeah, it'd be hard right now.
So, we could essentially need January timeframe, February timeframe, and start to.
Look at what other options are, absolutely.
I'd be very interested in, uh, because it's the way it's going.
Oh, yeah, and HSA has been going on for nineteen years, for, for sure. I said, I've been doing HSAs for eighteen, nineteen years, so.
That's what my wife asks for the city of Mayan, and we love it.
Yeah, absolutely, and like I said, it, it, the HSA rolls with them, so, I mean, you know, if somebody's got twenty thousand dollars built up in there. One of the reasons, so I do it for our school, too, and one of the main reasons, we, we started with it back in the day, was because. Diapers employees being able to retire at fifty five, you know, a lot of them were working past fifty five just for the insurance, not necessarily for the job, but for the insurance. So, you can use HSA money for COVID premiums. So, I had a, a, a principal a couple of years ago that that retired because he had a bunch into his HSA, and was using that money. To pay premiums, so, I mean, like I said, if they start early, you could, because there's no cap on how much you can put in it. So, they got forty, fifty grand, you know, and you mean in the.
Annually, there's a cap.
Annually, right, but no, no cap on how much they can have in it.
Stuff to spend it down.
Yeah, right.
And when you retire, you've got that money you can use for your medical.
Yeah, or COVID premiums, if somebody wants to retire at sixty two or something, and get out a little early, you know.
So, there's a cap on how much you can put in, but it can be as much as you want.
You can accumulate it after that as well, yeah.
You know, if it's got a hundred and fifty in it, oh, baby, you can only put.
I think for two thousand twenty four, it seems to be four thousand fifty dollars you can put in for a single family, be eighty one hundred, and then if you're over fifty five, you can do an additional thousand dollar cap, so. So, they could put up to ninety, ninety one hundred dollars, or ninety one or ninety two, something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Got you.
Yeah, and if it's something, we'll certainly put on meetings, um, can run around, teach people how, how it works and.
It'd be a big educational. Show them that it's gonna end up saving money and.
We usually do an open enrollment in May, but we could. Start that sooner, just to be able to get the education out there, we needed to.
I'd be all about the education.
You got a lot of younger people on the, on the staff, or on the county employment, so, I mean. They should be where they're using it less now, so they could start building that.
Absolutely, then it becomes like, technically, you know, once they have that, then there's some teledocs that'll come with it where they can phone in and. Get a lot of, um, so they're not having to go to the clinic. Um, all of a sudden, it's a twenty five dollar, you know, charge to them instead of a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollar charge, so.
Yeah.
Put it on your calendar.
Okay, yep, we'll do that. We'll talk to Carla and start working on some HSA codes as well. I think it's a good opportunity to at least. At least bring it up, if it doesn't happen this year, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's the talking point to start moving forward, no doubt.
Will be an option.
Yeah.
So, we'll leave the contact information.
Yep, I'll leave my cards and stuff, yeah.
But I'll be around for ten months here, so if there's questions or requests.
So, you're done at the end of the month?
Yes.
Appreciate it, you've done it for us.
Always appreciate it coming here and being with everybody, so.
I think you're working relationship, and I think you bought a gentleman in that'll continue the relationship, so I don't curse, or share on school together, so. Thank you, be a good fit, so.
We'll make it, we'll make the transition, so, thank you. Appreciate it, have a good Christmas.
All right.
All right, discuss take action liquor license for Goffer Ridge Farm. LLC. No, no, I'd entertain a motion to approve this liquor license. Mr. Mulbauer makes motion, seconded by Mr. Dozar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, states so by saying aye. Opposed, nay, fair votes up. All right, uh, we're citizens input, before we get into that, we were talking about the pipeline, we're gonna go on a little bit about that. I think that's probably a relevant discussion.
Probably, uh, so this, that isn't a new ruling, that's not new. But the way that that it was presented in our email, uh, it's now in the eighth district where there's three judges that are gonna decide, basically. That was kind of old news, a little bit. Um, and so, uh, what'll happen is rather, what was happening there is the judge, that particular judge was just saying. You cannot enforce any of those ordinances at this time, it's kind of a, oh, I took some notes that I don't think, uh, you just can't enforce them. You're not, can't enforce any of the. Ordnances that are out there that were specifically, you know, I don't, you know, they're all listed out singly, item, item A three through twelve. No one, that's why they named them all, as a supervisor personally, you cannot enforce them. It's just, right now, back in the eighth district where there's three judges that will look at it and review it. And that the final decision has not really been made.
So, that was basically in the, for an appeal of the enforcement process.
So, it wasn't like, because I, I'd said, I tried to call him yesterday, and it went right to voicemail, and the voicemail wanted to know. Particularly what you wanted to talk about, so I thought, oh, you know, and it's not why I called him.
I suspect his phone was busy.
And it's not why I called him, I called him about another, uh, issue that we've kind of been working on a little bit. And, uh, so then he called me back this morning, and, uh, he said that was not new, maybe it's not the way it was created, it does, that it just came out.
Yeah.
Been out there for a while.
Okay.
And so I said, I'm glad we talked, because there's gonna be some alarmists, you know, that he said, man, it's just, so, that's the update.
Okay, well, anything further? For the supervisor reports?
I mean, all I had was farm, some mag committee stuff, just talking about the farm bill, nothing that we really don't already know.
We got eight to twelve on Thursday.
You do on Thursday? Okay, I've actually had a quiet week this week.
Yeah, Department of Corrections on Friday, I believe.
I have webinar tomorrow.
Yep, I'm gonna plan on getting on that.
You were on that, yeah.
Alrighty, uh, are there, is there any citizens input from outside in the? Internet?
I don't know who D is, Michael Jordan didn't make it again this week, and he's just keeping an eye on her kid.
Then she needs to.
I have a couple of things.
Yes, ma'am.
You got an email about an ATM in the courthouse, requesting that, so I, uh, um. Mike Currie does that type of service.
So, this recent.
Right, and they never got back to me, I contacted them, um, but Mike did, and, um. It would just need, um, access to wifi and a place for him to bolt it to the, to the floor. Um, he charges a three dollar fee for withdrawal, um.
And that fee goes to the person that's withdrawing the money, not to the courthouse.
Right, exactly, the person getting the money, so there's no expense to us, and he mentioned. A willingness to share that possibly, and the only reason I could see is if. There are increased expenses to our wifi, but I can't imagine there's that much wifi usage from that machine. It would be for him to be able to access the machine, to know when to, um, put cash in and stuff, we wouldn't manage it in any way, shape or form, it would just sit in our building. Right.
Jake said that he could just use our guest then, or?
Um, he said he might set up their own, just so.
Security, what's best location to put it?
So, he mentioned, um, there's a wifi connection in the conference room on the first floor. Um, there's a connection up here, and he thought the second floor might be the better location for it. Yeah, out in the.
foyer, or whatever you call that.
Yes. Yep. So, yeah, I just wanted to, uh.
It seemed like, uh, Amy had mentioned that, what, at the sheriff's department, that a lot of that stuff is cash, and do you have some things?
I don't.
You don't?
The clerk's office does some, yeah.
So, if it's on this floor, it'd be kind of in between sheriff's office, clerk's office, and then it would serve our trade.
And I talked to them this morning, and having it closer to the sheriff's office, the, the, the wifi is the issue there. So, they wouldn't need it there, they didn't anticipate it being close, closer to them because of the request, so.
The question that I would have is. Is this during business hours, or, you know, what I was.
Yeah, our building's locked after.
Yeah, so let's say somebody comes, does it have anything to do with after hours, getting people out of jail, let's say, cash only, I'm just trying to figure out.
No, no, no business hours, it'll be available.
Courthouse shutdown?
They have found that if someone has to leave the building, say, go to one of the ATMs located close by. They don't necessarily return.
Okay, well, and they would monitor, you know, the person who owns the ATM, if he's just not willing to, because there's a cost involved in that. They may make the decision that it just doesn't do enough, and they may take it out, so. I feel if he's willing to put one in, or it doesn't cost us anything, it's gonna be a benefit to, uh, our taxpayers as they come in, there could be times that somebody. You know, needs it for to buy their license, and they just, because they forgot their checkbook or whatever. Um, so I would say let him go ahead and put it in, and he can monitor the traffic, if it's worth his investment to have it sitting here, not producing enough to make it worth it.
Well, he's got to bolt it down through our nice floors, what happens if he does decide to take it out?
We just have to fill it and plug it, we got marble.
I'm in favor of it, don't get me wrong, but. Do we need to ask, like, the historical preservation committee, because I mean, they.
Ask whoever you need to ask.
I don't want, I don't want if there be a problem, like, we get this all put in and they're like, hey.
Our vending machines don't, I mean.
I guess.
If anything needed to leave this building would be those vending machines right inside the front door.
They're.
They're a P O C, yeah, sorry. Well, that too, but.
She was being a little bit.
The only other thing. If that is a problem, they could possibly maybe put it in the hallway, that that annex is through, kind of setting outside.
Right, I wondered about that, too, when I was walking through there, because it is not marble floor.
It is not, it is hallway.
By Louise's.
That walkway.
That'd be fine, I just. Probably work so hard in the bathrooms to keep them.
Leave holes in the wall. But you don't want to start, you know.
They're already asking about that on our new drywall.
No, I, I'm, my point is.
No, I'm just saying, there's already been requests, and it's like, yeah, you're not hanging on that drywall.
But if you find a good spot like that.
No, I know, yeah, I thought about the same thing, because it's just a linoleum floor.
Be real careful.
Me too.
Because it's not gonna be a permanent fixture, and it needs to take it out.
It'd be the wifi at that point. I wonder what kind of connectivity he could get, I mean, it's right outside the conference room, so.
Yeah, I would think it's right next to.
Isn't it wirelessly connected, it doesn't have to have a.
I make them.
He's got to reach out and grab it, I think.
I have one more thing.
You guys get a chance, so, real quick?
Don't let her do it.
I poke my head in.
Don't let her do it.
It's citizen input, I'm a citizen, I pay taxes in this county. So, this was in the, in the folder, a gentleman from your District Three meeting, he didn't get to talk to the three of you, but. Something they do in historic buildings to help structurally make sure that they're sound and they're not absorbing moisture from below the ground. So.
I, I looked at that, and I personally, I didn't think that we have an issue, but maybe Dave would say, oh, we do have a sound issue.
They'd be able to tell us if we have an issue, they'd come.
And there's no charge for that.
I don't think so, not for the evaluation and the testing and stuff, so.
I mean, this building's a hundred and twenty years old, right?
Right.
Kind of fell over. I mean, I know, and if it's never been done, it'd be like, maybe we should see if the, maybe the foundation, what, what's underneath.
Right.
Is in good shape.
Right.
Sometimes I want to know.
That might not hurt, I mean, the consultation's free.
I'll see it, Phil.
Maybe talk to Dave, and let him see what he thinks, and he can line it up for a consultation, because. I'm not trying to step on your toes or nothing.
My feet are way too big for you to step on my toes.
He could do some of the legwork, I mean, I think we gave him a. I, I'd raise that, he could do some of that legwork, and he's been doing a pretty good job, I think, of filling them in.
Oh, he does a really good job.
That's why.
We talk every day multiple times, we're this close to getting our bathrooms back, fabulous.
Seen they look.
So, it's not gonna be this week?
It is probably not gonna be this week.
Well, they still got windows.
One more vendor that has to get here, and I don't know what they've been here yet.
I was in there yesterday.
And they weren't sure what day they would actually be coming, when we met last Thursday.
Vendor gonna come in and say.
Finished whatever, there's something they have to finish, I can't remember, and there's just a little.
Blue tapes all around.
There's little, de, little details that are getting done, the glassings in one of the doors, in an old door. Needed replaced, because it is quite transparent, anyway.
You can see right in the one door.
Yeah. Because it still had the old etching on it and stuff.
It's got it in this morning.
Has it got a new window in it?
When I look, I'm gonna crack the door glass. Which, it's not an issue that you couldn't open it, they're just gonna get new glass, and when it comes in, replace it. Yeah, it looked like where they were trying to get it wedged in that hole, and it might.
Bet they would.
I bet they'd get it too.
But they did.
Maybe even a bigger word.
I would have.
Why, why we're talking about courthouse stuff, last week when we were popping popcorn, you know, Wheezy Vision, she had that dialed in pretty good. She had it all dolled up for popcorn days and that. This bolting board out here, could we, would it?
Which one, the one outside the treasurer's office?
Could we get a TV that would be a little more eye appealing, I don't, I guess I don't know.
Anything you want.
I don't know if anybody actually read that bolting board or not. I don't know if anybody actually read that bulletin board or not.
What are you wanting to put there?
Well, you can put.
A TV like.
TV like Wheezy Vision has.
A Wheezy Vision?
Yeah. And, uh, you could put stuff on there, but.
I know, well, we put up all the bulletin boards to keep people from posting it directly on the walls and all over the marble and stuff like that. That was the, kind of the purpose of the bulletin boards, because it was getting tragic out there.
And that's fine, that's fine.
But, yeah, it's a little cluster. I don't know what information is really valid on, you know, I don't know if anybody manages their bulletin boards.
And if we put a TV up there, who's going to monitor that and actually keep that stuff valid too?
Right. I think Louise would, she talked about it, actually.
That would be the question. So, you've got an organization that wants, that needs to get some information out, so they just bring their little flyer up and put it on the bulletin board. I've seen people stand there and read them, you know, their professors are waiting to go to court or whatever, so, but they never come take them back down. They're, then things are over.
No.
Uh, so, we change it to where you have a, a, some, a function you need to let the public know. You would bring it to someone at the courthouse and they would have to manually put it in, so it reads on your scrolling screen. Then that person's going to have to take it off when the function is over, updated, and so it opens up a manual kind of a jug.
You have some thirty-seven and a half hour employee.
Perfect. I say we do it.
I hear you. That, that's the drawback of having something like that.
So, I think you can schedule that on that system, that it, you know, a date, a time, a range that you're posting it. Absolutely. Currently, it's Louise doing it on hers.
Well, is that a volunteer? Louise will take care of it.
She's the one that brought it to my attention that maybe we could do that upstairs.
Well, and she said we could use the same system. It would be the same system.
I'll go talk to her about it, so I can get a volunteer.
So, it's just basically a normal TV that's got to be.
With their wifi.
Yeah.
When she sits on her computer.
Yeah, she's very, very.
Probably scans in documents, it pulls, you know.
I will visit with Louise and I'll have a report next week on what would all be involved. How's that?
Wheezy Vision.
Thank you.
You're welcome, because I'm interested in that and I think it would be great, because people do stand there and read, um, right, what's going on.
Yep.
And I.
You have anything else?
I try not to.
Make a convention.
Tim Berry just texted me and said, if you guys want to come out to the park after the meeting and check the bridge out.
Let's do it. Kai and I have another meeting, but we could tell them.
If we all go out there at separate time, then we don't need it.
She wants to.
So, I was going to, I was going to go out there anyway. If you want to come out to the park and see the progress on the range trust.
We have to go separately?
In groups of two or less.
Two or less if she doesn't go with us.
Hilarious.
Put my peg way behind you like I always do. I won't even act like I know you guys.
Well, we got our other meeting.
Yeah.
If you want to, we could go out.
Would you have a meeting?
We, whenever we get done with this, we just kind of have to.
I'm heading out of town.
You are?
Sound like.
Lucky.
Sound like we got our control, though. We even have the best day off.
Thought I was going to.
From us anyway. Grandparents stay at preschool.
There was a motion made to adjourn by Ms. Hayden, seconded by Mr. Mulbauer. Aye, favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.